To discuss the red lines of the West Creek Master Development Agreement. That's what I'd like to focus on is the red lines because we have a limited amount of time. And so let's talk about those and then if there are remaining, if there's any more time, we can talk about things beyond that. If you want to. So, um, I guess the be vested was just a simple little thing.
Yep.
Okay, the next first red line is in the event that developer does not submit.
Did you say the number since I don't?
Two point five.
Two point five. Oh, you don't have colors?
Well, I, my printer doesn't print colors.
Okay, okay, I will, I will read those out. So it's two point five. In the event that developers does not submit to Far West application for building permit within five years of the date of execution of this agreement by Far West, the project property within the boundaries of Far West shall immediately and automatically revert back to the A1 zone as the zone existed in the code ordinance at the time of the execution of this agreement.
And this will be subject to a little edit, actually. It's just going to say it will immediately and automatically revert back to the existing zone at the time of the execution of this agreement because there's actually some C2.
I was going to say, does that cover the C2? So it'll just revert back to the previous zone?
To the previous zone.
Yeah, I wondered about that.
Okay. Does anybody have a problem with that?
I don't have a problem, just mechanically, if that were to happen, that would still require action on the part of the city council.
It would not.
So this, this, this automatically changes the code?
No, it automatically reverts back.
Right, that's what it's doing.
So I erase them.
Yep, so it's saying.
So there's no further action.
Right, exactly. Yep, after five years, if they haven't submitted for building permit, going right back.
The zoning goes back to what it was and they have to start over.
Well, the zone currently C2 or A1 C2?
Yes.
Both, both, so we go back to both.
It would go back to whichever. No, that's what he was just saying.
Insert that as well.
Revert back to the previous zoning is how we will read.
Yep, so that gives them a five year time period to submit a building.
Something on the far west side of the line.
Yep, has to come to far west within five years for that building permit. And I know that was a concern, so.
Well, it was just the idea that this could sit out there indefinitely with no development on our side of the agreement.
And I, I, I like expirations because, you know, if you don't do anything, then you haven't done anything. Maybe somebody else wants to do something else, I don't know. Who knows? Or maybe you want to do something else if you own it. So any issues with that? We're good. Okay, the next is three dot two. The developer may develop or construct portions of the project.
Three point two?
I'm just asking if I could make a note on his.
Oh, sorry, I thought you were telling me to wait. Develop and/or construct portions of the project in multiple phases so long as each phase provides a logical extension of the road system, infrastructure and utilities throughout, through the project and complies with the terms of this agreement and other applicable provisions of the city's vested laws.
So this goes back to our discussion we had on phases. And in development agreements, I know we usually oftentimes see phasing in residential projects, right? Because the builder knows this is the houses I'm building, this is where I'm going to start, this is where I'm going to finish. And so this is kind of an attempt to bridge the gap here between your concerns, which are legitimate concerns about there's no phasing, we want to know when and where these buildings are going to be built, and the developer's ability to be able to develop as the need arises. Because with the commercial projects, it is a little bit different. Even in the county, we don't usually require any phasing on a commercial project. So we're trying to get to a nice middle ground, something that'll satisfy the city council and still work for the developer.
It's a logical extension of road system, infrastructure and utilities.
I mean, basically, it's going to follow the road build out. As the road gets built.
Yeah, you wouldn't build this corner first.
It's a roadway directly to it.
Right, it's going to have a road to it for egress.
Yeah.
Rather useful.
Yes.
So that's where I ended up with three point two. Black Pine seemed to be okay with it, that it would still allow them to just follow the infrastructure and the roads. I just want to know from city council and planning if that works for you guys.
Hey, questions, concerns?
What do you think, Katie?
All right, I'm, I'm good on it.
Okay.
Okay, the next one, I think, was just Far West Code and Ordinance.
Yeah, they still haven't codified, last time I looked, they haven't give us a subsection in chapter seventeen.
Oh, as far as what the number is?
Yes.
It's still in the list of.
It's to be codified. Yes.
It's still ordinance twenty four seventeen.
Yes. So that one, I just.
It's that hot off the press. Okay, the next one of significance is four one one.
So I do have a question on this one, and it also relates to four one three. So can you, Liam, can you help me understand what that maximum lot coverage means? Does that mean that like there can potentially be a building on that, on a twenty acre lot that takes up fifty five percent of that lot?
So you're talking on four one four or four one three?
Four one four, four one one and four one three, because I think they're kind of related.
Yes, yes, so if you have a twenty acre lot maximum, which is going to be allowed in Far West City, if that's the change you guys are okay with, and in four one three, it says maximum lot coverage will be fifty five percent of any lot area covered by a main building and/or accessory buildings.
Yeah, so of the acreage, fifty five percent of it can be built.
Right.
Doesn't have to be building.
So in our current ICZ zone has a maximum lot size of ten acres.
Yeah, I talked to Daniel about this yesterday. If everyone's all right with, are you okay? Everybody okay if we go back to what's in the code of ten acres?
Yes, I was doing some math and laying things out with that percentage, and I was like, if I can, with fifty five percent at twenty acres, you could have a four hundred and seventy nine thousand square foot building, which is huge, that's bigger than the Amazon building. So I think.
We're fine with ten.
Ten puts a, as a max.
And the concept is one building per lot, right? So you're basically, is that what, is that, I'm assuming that's.
Let's clarify that, then typically it would be a building per lot.
Well, I think that ought to be stated clearly, so you know that a lot size means this is the, this is the footprint for one building.
Would a lot ever be sold and have two buildings built on it?
I don't know, that's my question.
Well, this time, this kind of place, the main building and then maybe an accessory building, depending on what it's, ends up being, but it's like if you had a, trying to think of a good example.
A maintenance building.
Or something.
A garage or.
Then we detached from the primary structure. But that, so that's where the max lot coverage comes into play.
Okay.
You couldn't have a bunch of accessory buildings like garages and things that exceed that threshold.
You can't go beyond the fifty five percent.
So if we were to bring it back down to ten acres, then you, that's, that threshold would still be the same, but.
So if you come back down to ten acres, your max at fifty five percent is about two hundred and thirty nine thousand square feet. Max.
More comfortable?
Yeah, I think.
It's a lot more comfortable in twenty.
That's a big, I mean, just kind of laying it out, it's a big difference.
And that way, we're basically just following the existing code.
So what I'm not seeing here, and you got to translate square feet into acreage for me, in four point one one, we've got twenty thousand square feet.
It's about a half acre is the minimum. So an acre is forty three thousand five sixty.
I'm not seeing the ten or twenty, well, the twenty acres up there, yes, at the beginning of four point one.
Yep, we're taking that down to ten.
Down to ten. The problem, not the problem, the issue here is, as you have indicated, right now, these lots are ethereal, they're undefined. They will not receive physical dimension until a client wants to build on a certain amount of property, and so it could be anywhere from a half an acre to a ten acre site for their building, depending on what they come to you with proposal, is that correct?
Yeah.
So it's, it's now piece by piece, it's kind of a little patchwork quilt, we'll do this one, this one might be bigger, this one might be smaller, but it's still right now just gross acreage to be subdivided as needed.
Right, so we'll have to come back through the city for a subdivision and you'll.
For each lot?
Yes.
Or, or sets of lots, depending on.
That's right, and how the half acre came up, it, the entrance where the school's at, those little commercial buildings they have at the entrance, they sit on about a half acre. So that's where Mary at Sladeville came up with that, if they didn't want anything smaller than what those little commercial buildings would be.
Okay, so far, so good?
Well, so we'll change the language to clarify the.
Yep, absolutely, I got it in here, I'll change.
Okay, and then the, the, the next red line was four one five. Maximum building height shall be fifty feet. Well, and then it goes maximum building height within two hundred feet of residential zone shall be forty feet. That's, that gives us at least the stair stepping phasing of you're not having the largest buildings closest to the residential.
Does that include along with now?
Is it, yeah, because it's residential right over there, right?
Yeah, I just didn't know that, you know, the nature of the cow being there.
Yeah, no, even if that, even if they're on the other side of the canal, which they are, two hundred feet from there.
So that gives, the width of the canal plus.
So it's not like anything around the perimeter boundary of this entire project.
The north and eastish.
The north and east is going to start at that forty foot level and then graduate up to the fifty.
Unless they're back.
I want to talk about that.
Okay.
I love the concept of the stair step thing. I have some problems with this two hundred feet.
Okay.
You've got a hundred foot buffer, you've added to that a road, which is a sixty foot road, that's only forty feet, the setback's twenty. All a developer would have to do is set the building back twenty feet and he could go up to fifty. I think, my preference would be to have language that explicitly states that the first tier of buildings between this development and the residential zone shall not exceed forty feet. So there's no Mickey Mouse in brown with distances.
So how do you, how do you do that if the building is oriented like this and extends, you know, it could be three or four hundred, five hundred, six hundred feet away from that boundary? If you say.
Well, make a diagram when you're talking.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You understand what I'm talking about. It'd be very easy to say.
It's like if I were to do a building like this, and if you, if the language is written that the first building has to be forty feet, I could be halfway through the property before, with one building and then.
I understand that. What I'm trying to do is protect the residents from what they, I'm looking from the residents, it really doesn't matter how this building's configured, they're going to look at the side that faces that. Where it's, where it's the short side or the long side, that's the side that faces that.
That determines the ultimate height of the entire building.
I understand that, so in, in developing.
It has to graduate at some point because otherwise.
Oh, you, you mean the building itself?
Yeah, because otherwise, like I'm saying, if you see the first building, that could be halfway through the property.
You're willing to create a building that stair steps?
Well, that's what we tried to do, is say, the first two hundred feet, you're stair stepping it.
My problem with the two hundred feet is that's, I could see it easy, a hundred foot buffer, sixty foot road, some parking space in front, and you could just ease out of that two hundred foot zone, and then this doesn't mean anything.
And then it's a win for everybody, right? Because you already.
No, no, because.
You have two hundred foot setback.
No, no, but the point is, we're trying to, I, I think twenty feet for the people that have to look at this isn't going to matter a whole lot. I, I like the idea of a stair step that kind of visually buffers this enormous block wall.
But right now, I'm not required to build this road. That's a potential road. So I don't have to put this road in, right? Like if I need it, I can. So right now, we're, we're putting in a hundred foot open space buffer, what we're committing to is another hundred feet until you're.
Therein lies the, the hard part about making a decision and create, creating language around this.
Yeah.
Because there is no, you know, buildings, proposed buildings or dimensions on there, and if we had some of that information, we could create language that said, you know, you're allowed so many of this type of building on the, in this part of, but without any of those details on the concept plan, all we're left with is what's in here. And so it's.
But I, I went over and sat, and I went and looked at that and, you know, tried to get my visual of what that looks like. And, and even with that, even with that hundred foot buffer, you know, up on the front, Allen's property, the side of their house is another three hundred and fifty feet. You get back down into the corner of Mark Hanson's and Fishburne's, it's the back of the property where they usually, they have, most of them have big buildings back there anyway. There is a, there's a huge buffer in their backyard as well as this, so I, I guess I'm not as concerned about that. When you look at it visually and say, oh, there's quite a bit of space here before we even show a building, and, and Amazon, you know, even as big as it is, pells with that concept, you know, as far as height and everything else, so.
Yeah.
That's, I just did that for myself to kind of understand what we need and what we should have.
I think one thing, I mean, Liam, I just noticed, the max height in your residential zone is forty feet. So if we were to propose a set of mixed use and do residential, we could have effectively no setback with forty foot houses. So we're asking for two hundred foot setback with forty foot potentially.
Can I ask a question in relation to this? Let's suppose your road is along there, now there's tenants that are starting to build what they want, and we're at that two hundred foot spot. Is it possible just to say that anything facing north within that first zone, that first area of this, is going to be kept at forty feet? Just so there's some uniformity along that street, I don't think we want to see somebody go back another fifty feet, and now there's a fifty foot building and a forty foot building. Could we have a forty foot uniformity along that north and east boundary? That north boundary particularly, so.
I'm less concerned about the canal, because how wide is the canal? I mean, that's, that's, you're way, I mean, that's, I don't, that's not even. Yeah, I, I, I won't even talk about the canal, you know, it's the north side.
It would look a lot better if the buildings facing that first street, whether they're two hundred feet back or two hundred and fifty feet back, are at least of uniform height or at least under a min, under a maximum, in other words.
And that's kind of what you're proposing, right? They just said step it up at some point.
It stays, it has to stay below forty or below for two hundred feet.
If, if all the buildings.
Go to fifty?
I mean, as a.
Same building?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Two hundred and one.
And I'm not sure that's real clear in here. I don't know how to make it more clear. This is very practical in terms of.
Stair stepping internally in a building.
Going back another twenty feet, I want a taller building. Now you get this going on along there, it looks like a street with skyscrapers and little stuff. I would like to see, whatever we agree to, I'd like to see a uniform horizon along there in terms of the height of the buildings. I don't know.
You want everything to be identically, identical on the same height?
I don't want to see forty footers and fifty footers, I don't care if there's a forty footer and a thirty footer, but I don't think we want to suddenly jump up to fifty feet because you've got a foot further beyond the two hundred. I think the concern here is legitimate. I pull out my tape, two hundred feet, I'm at forty. Two hundred and ten feet, I'm at fifty.
And, and just to be clear, that it's the potential, that's the max. So it's not to say you're going to build fifty feet, it's just the max height.
And I think we have to plan for that.
This is the, this is our, maximum is a protection for the city, that's why you put that language.
Because if you look at these buildings, none of these buildings in the Agribuse Exchange are at forty feet.
Yeah, and so in contrast to what you've said, David, I'm not overly concerned about the uniformity and height. I am concerned, though, that by just adjusting the building's position relative to the boundary, you could suddenly go up potentially not just ten, but maybe fifteen feet. I would much prefer it stated explicitly that on the part of this development facing north, the residential zone, that the first tier of buildings, however oriented, cannot exceed forty feet.
I'm going to throw a wrench in that. So if they don't.
Throw it all.
If they don't put the road there, and they put the road on the south side, we have the back of building that you're seeing, if you say it has the front.
Well, I'm not worried because this already says all four sides of the building have to look the same, so they're, we're protected there. Slaterville protected us.
I think what Boyd's saying there, oh, I think what Boyd's saying there is if we just did buildings off the back of this road, they could be fifty footers, then we didn't do any other buildings, I don't know. Is that what you're trying to say?
I'm just saying if that road shifted.
Or we shifted that up, maybe we just, maybe we just built this road a year and then you have buildings that are like that.
Okay, if. If, if you were to do that, what that does is it eliminates the only element you right now have in your concept plan. That's the only element. So the concept plan is nothing. Right now, it's close to nothing, what you just suggested would make it zero.
What element do you tie that exactly?
The only thing the concept plan shows are roads. If you're talking about changing the roads, the only thing we have in the concept plan is a roadmap.
Yeah, these are all required, so these ones won't get shifted, I think what Boyd's talking about is like this road got shifted up higher.
Right.
But what's that got to do with this side right here?
Because then it's the back that's facing the north, and so what you're saying, what you, the verb, the verbage you used is all buildings facing north.
Okay, I, I will stand that corrected.
Okay.
The north side of, given that this says all sides of the building have to look the same, all I'm saying is the north facing, the north facing portion of the building, that's what I'm concerned about. And since that's attached, since that's attached to the whole building, by, by definition, the building is outside.
Yeah, how far off the boundary do you want that to be? I don't think who cares.
I'm saying period.
Any building that's going to be the most.
Yes, you don't play around, you don't play some gymnastics with distances, you just simply say.
All those buildings are forty feet.
Right, that's sort of the, that's the intent here. I worry about the intent not being met, so why not we state it explicitly so it's, there's no ambiguity?
Regardless of which side you go on. Business exchange and none of them are forty feet, I mean, that wouldn't really hinder you guys in.
Yeah, a lot of times what they'll do, I mean, what a lot of city ordinances have, are if you go back a foot and you get a foot of height.
We did that with sheds.
Yeah, so, I mean, we're, we're more accustomed to something like this, just so there's, it's less, I mean, I, my concern with that is just like to the point of if I have a building that's halfway through the property and I don't do anything within five hundred feet of the boundary, but I saw that before. Because what if I end up with a building that, an employer that needs a seat of parking, but they, their building wants to be fifty feet, and then they have a huge, but it's five hundred feet away from the boundary or something, right? I'm just trying to think of all the scenarios, right?
I think, I think it's reasonable to have a line to go, okay, anything north of this line needs to be less than.
That feels more.
Forty feet.
Well, that accomplishes what I'm saying, because north of it, line X is the side facing.
Five hundred feet?
Five hundred feet is the line.
Is what is in there right now, that's the line. Two hundred feet from the residential zone is going to be forty, but anything in there's forty.
If, if you think about it, though, we're basically only talking about twenty feet. Sixty foot road, hundred foot buffer, twenty foot setback, you're only talking about twenty feet before this doesn't apply anymore.
So, I mean, are you more comfortable with two hundred and fifty feet?
Yes, I would, then at least it's, if, a developer's not going to create this enormous wasted space in the front, okay? But, but budging it back twenty feet so you could get an extra ten feet in height, I'm not speaking for you, but I could sure see why you would, might want to do that, because you could say, okay, we'll just create more parking in the front.
So with two fifty, satisfying.
And that's what we look at and say, if you do, if we do that to get the height, the residents are benefiting, so we're shifting it back.
As far enough away, the height is going to start to become less.
That's, that's what I'm saying initially as I sat there, the height somewhat diminishes when you look at distances.
So further you get away from a horizon, the lower it goes.
I, I don't, where did the two hundred, where did the two hundred come from? Where did that number come from?
Out of these conversations initially.
Double what we were doing.
Yeah, it started with a hundred initially, on the very first meeting, it was a hundred.
We literally just doubled it.
Well, and, and I understand, the farther you, farther away you are, the less it's an issue. I'm just concerned with the language that as stated, all you'd have to do is move the building back, and this doesn't mean anything.
But after that two hundred feet, shouldn't we be okay with?
Okay, are all of you?
If whatever our buffer is, whatever we set, after that, aren't we okay, or the maximum, if it's.
It really comes down to is two hundred, what's the, what's the feet, is two hundred feet the feet?
Yeah.
Right?
And after that, as long as we have that buffer, and they stay within the heights that are, you know, the maximum heights here, then we should be okay with, with that.
So Lou maybe doesn't like two hundred feet, do you guys like two hundred feet?
If I'm a minority, I'll back off, I mean.
Well, it's, it's not two football fields, it's not yards. It's three, it's two thirds of a football field.
Let's make it a football field.
I think it's getting away from.
Yeah.
The intent of what we had talked about, about kind of creating a tiered development with that more.
Thank you.
Clear warehousing in the middle, you're still, it, it's not saying, giving an exception and just saying.
I agree with you, in other words, you could back off twenty feet and there would be no tier at all.
So when that's, when those conversations, like when we talked about doing like multiple layers, it's, we didn't even have a hundred foot setback. So then we created a hundred foot setback, and then we created another hundred foot setback, so we, we're already kind of creating that, multiple tiers or layers. So you feel like you're at a hollow setback?
You're tearing it back, you're.
So I feel like we're, we're, the two hundred feet is back to the original conversation we were having, is you're getting a hundred and then you're getting another hundred before we get to height. If we want to, if we want to have a discussion about the two hundred, is that enough? We're happy to, but.
I think it just goes back to like, if we had an actual concept plan, we could put better words to this in this agreement. If we knew what type of buildings were going in here, and what, how many, and a rough estimate of like, like, hey, this is, you know, some, we had some guesstimation on what capacity was going to be there, we could put, we could put better language in this agreement, but without that, we're stuck with these ramblings about two hundred feet versus one hundred feet, and it doesn't give us any protection.
Only two hundred feet does, if you leave it at that, or if we increase it. It's just, are we happy with two hundred or do we want?
Yeah, that's the question, I think, is are you happy with two hundred?
Whether it's two hundred or two twenty, I don't think it's going to make that much difference on the visual side of it.
But another fifty feet is not a significant difference when you're talking about the height of the building.
So like, especially again, sitting out there and trying to mentally look at it and see how that would, how would it appear, how it would appear if it was in my backyard, how would it, would it be appeared to them, you know, what, what does that look like? And so.
I have a question.
Sure.
In other city meetings, we're talking about individual properties and putting up fences at a minimum fence height, do they have a minimum fence height they need to put up?
Uh, I don't think the ICZ zone specifically requires a fence height, but.
No, there's, it does talk about.
Yeah.
You know, but think about it, a ten foot fence, when you've got a building that's potentially sixty five feet tall, that doesn't mean much to me.
What is really, what we really don't want is to go over on twelve hundred, you've got the wall, the wall, you don't want the wall.
Amen on that, Boyd.
If you look at, and that's what we're, we were trying to avoid with the whole thing, and that's why we asked for the hundred feet.
Yeah, so it's forty.
The wall is, they're probably what, fifty feet from the road?
It's forty.
Not forty.
I mean, it doesn't even seem like that.
From the road, so that doesn't include the road or people's front yards, but they still can't see anything.
What is your estimate of the distance between the, the wall and the houses?
The front, the front door of the house?
Yes.
And when, when you look at that, the appearance is like sixty feet, but I know it's not that.
Well, it's not fifty feet, I'm sure. And that's-
It's the forty foot and then the road and then whatever.
I'm saying it's pretty close to two hundred, I'll bet.
It's about a hundred and fifty probably.
We can do the math.
So, and by-
I think, I think the difference is that's-
That's front yards versus backyard.
So they already have a big buff. Well, I think what Boyd is saying is before you even get to the home, you have a huge backyard, cause those are big lots.
Most of those homes are looking out their back door at their big secondary building.
How, how tall are the boyer buildings?
From that building, from a, the building on twelve hundred to the front door is approximately two hundred, one ninety seven.
Yeah, I mean, how tall are the-
Boyer warehouses, they're, they'll be the elephant taller.
Yeah.
They might be sixty.
Those ones are taller.
Monsters.
Yeah. So yeah, that's, but that's-
Okay, we're gonna run, run out of time. So do we need to, um, is two hundred or do we need a different number?
I don't know the number, I just-
Well, I, I, personally, I think you gotta figure out a line that it's, if it's any closer than this, you know, you gotta be lower.
I'm, I'm grateful for the two hundred because that's more than we've got, than we originally asked for and I'm grateful, but I'm old.
Well, it, it, you know, I'm a minority vote here probably, but it, what you're talking about is there may be this stair step and there may not be this stair step. That's really what you're saying. So, so the idea of having the, the north side be stepped up or stepped down isn't, isn't necessarily guaranteed in this. If you had the appropriate setbacks, there'd be no step up or down at all.
If they move that though-
Which is, as long as, as long as you understand your language is same. That's all I said.
Two, two fifty, three hundred.
I think when you get the buildings together though, when you look at forty versus fifty, all in a, a, a line, horizon, again, I don't think it's gonna make-
I think they should all look different, so it's a skyline.
Last ten feet looks like it's right.
So then I'll propose we'd leave it at two hundred since it's double the ask and that's what it's been unless anybody really wants a specific number change.
And we can still vote on this whole thing in our next meeting.
I'm just gonna leave that one as two then.
Okay, next red line had to do with, uh, an owner's associate, oh, public trail.
Four point one point eleven.
Four point one point eleven. Okay, and this is, and dedicated to the cities as dedicated by the boundaries municipalities, all portions of the public trail shall be hard surface to meet the appropriate standards and a minimum of ten feet wide. Developers shall improve the open space simultaneously with rotor building improvement, improvements along its frontage. So that's the next red line.
So, um, my concern with this one is that, I mean, we're, as a project wise, why looking at, you know, and that kind of going down to that twenty percent number two, uh, you're, you're kind of diluting what we could get here in Far West. And I, and I couldn't, I couldn't tell because there were no acreages on the concept plan, how much acreage was represented in that strip along the top, the trail and the park. And so I, it's hard, it's also hard to be okay with this one because I don't have any numbers to go off of.
Was it eleven, thirteen, is what was it?
I can hold up, but so I did, we did the math on the percentages list. I didn't pay attention to the acreages as much, but the open space itself ends up being about fourteen-ish percent. And then we'll have, you know, landscaping around the buildings. And the current requirements in Far West in your, most of your zones is ten. So just the open space.
Twenty percent in our ICC.
Yeah.
And-
Ooh.
Yeah.
Measured on a project basis.
On a project basis. So if you have, but that's a project that's just in Far West. If you have a project, the project that's Far West, Marriott Slaterville, you're, that's what I mean, diluting that twenty percent across.
You're fourteen percent of open space though, and then you're gonna have landscaping around every single building. So right now, the, like, most of our buildings have between eight and twelve percent, just cause you have landscaping requirements within your parking or setbacks.
Two percent.
You're gonna be over forty percent.
As much as I am a fan of, of open space, I don't know what you would do to make it better on that north end. Just a wider trail? What would that accomplish?
The other problem, that strip along the north end, the language, and you kind of said at our last meeting, it's not even going to be for public use. It's going to be maintained and only accessed by-
Yeah, that was the, that was the request to Marriott Slaterville. They didn't want us to dedicate it to them, cause they didn't wanna have to maintain it. So they asked us to do it as part of our owners association. And that's how the language came about. But if you guys want us to donate the, or do something and then donate it to the city, like, we'll fire that too.
Does this, yeah, does the city want?
The trails, we'd like to see that trail become-
And the trail is-
It's just this other open space up there that either the city's gonna have to take care of and maintain, or the developer's willing to do it.
And believe me, it's not big enough to be useful. I, I, I wouldn't wanna put the pub, public works, people are gonna have to drive all the way out there to do this little dilly squat piece of land. I, I thought that was a good idea.
But they can use the trail, that's all public, and so.
And the association here will be required to keep it up, keep it green, keep it-
The business work.
Where is the trail?
It's in the middle of the-
Bottom, yeah, it's in that open space area.
This, right here?
Kind of meanders around the top.
This meandering line and down through this.
Basically through the open space right there.
Yeah, it may not be.
You know, realistically, how many residents of Far West are gonna go over there to use that open space?
There's, there's a handful, there's a handful that walk down that road.
Well, it's the people that are on the trail already just resting, but that's it.
The people of Far West, other than that, and maybe, maybe heritage might use it a little bit, but.
But it is in our general plan as a bike, a potential bike way that's separated from traffic, which, which-
Get us all the way with the four hundred?
If we can preserve that, that chunk of it without having to rely on the canal, I think that's-
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that, but there, that is being given to the city.
Yeah, we're gonna put-
This will tie, so this pathway that goes down these buffers will connect with, uh, Marriott Slaterville's system of pathways and whatnot. So it is part of the overall regional pathway system. You know, and even better if we put one along Cottonwood.
I've got, I've got your measurement here now, sorry, I was trying to find it there. This will open.
So while you open that then, we're okay with the open space being maintained and owned by HOA?
Yeah.
Ten, ten, looks like around ten acres.
Okay, the next red line. Five one five. Five one five. Installation of reasonable traffic calming measures on eighteen hundred west, also known as Cottonwood Drive, at the connection between the new road and existing road as reasonably requested by Far West City. So this could be, so this, this whole thing is, uh, in my mind where we could put in a gate, whether it's temporary or not, or some other kind of, uh, reasonable traffic calming to ensure that, uh, Cottonwood Drive is preserved and large amounts of traffic don't go up it. And I'm gonna say at least until we can improve Cottonwood, cause that will have to happen someday. We will have to improve Cottonwood.
And here, this addresses one of the major concerns of the residents over there, and that is the traffic impact on Cottonwood Drive. If we terminate that road at the development and there is no place for traffic to go, you're right, nothing's gonna change. Cherry's Nursery is gonna be the busiest, besides the homeowners coming and going themselves.
As it is now. It, it basically brings the current dead end further north than it is right now. And on, on a positive, so, and with conversations with Marriott Slaterville yesterday, they'd like to see it open. We would like to see it open too, but I don't wanna see it open until it's improved and safe. So.
What's their expectation as to when that will open?
Well, it's not up to them, it's on our property.
Okay, but their expectation was they don't, they don't want it, they don't want it to be twenty years.
We've been negotiating-
Protected by the reasonable, I mean-
Define the word reasonable first.
No, the reason why I'm saying that is when you're developing this right here, potentially you're gonna have to come back and do this calming, put in this thing.
It is a reasonable-
So let's get, let's make reasonable-
Calling traffic measures doesn't do him any benefit, it doesn't you guys benefit, because you guys get to dictate what it means.
We all need to, to agree on what that word means.
Well, right, right. Do you want it to be defined as you have to put in a speed bump? This gives you guys discretion to decide what traffic calming measures need to be put in place.
That's not reasonable.
Oh, that says as reasonably or-
Yeah, but, well, but look at this, look at this. This is developer road improvements. So it's gonna be on him to install whatever reasonable traffic calming measures the city deems appropriate.
Not whether he thinks it's reasonable.
No.
Or we do.
Yes. But I'm gonna actually protect your interest. I can't believe I'm doing this.
God.
No, from his point of view, at some point, he shouldn't be, time point I'm talking about, he shouldn't be obligated for us doing something at that gate twenty years from now.
No.
No.
Well, that says, that, is that where you're reasonable, you're protected by reasonable, whatever that means?
So right now, as written, it's just when we connect the two roads, at the city would have to dictate whatever they want.
That's a gate, that's a-
That might be useful language to have in there, so that you know exactly when that obligation takes place, where the trigger is for it.
We would put that in.
No, I would, just because otherwise it, it's sort of, you know, we turn back to twenty, fifteen years from now and say, by the way.
Yeah, I, actually, it, it, you know, and it, when the, it's actually already connected, not with the improved road, but you know, I'd personally like to see the gate in as soon as possible so that like when you're into construction, the construction trucks aren't going down that road.
Yeah, that's fair too.
That's a great point, because I think, and, and I'm an advocate of the gate. I think that's the best way to protect that road until it is-
And, and we've, we've talked with, um, the, the fire marshal, because it, it is legal by code, not preferred. So I think we can reasonably say, and we can use the word reasonably on this, is, you know, that we can mitigate the traffic on Cottonwood until we can improve the road that the traffic is on.
Maybe to your answer is I would like to put this in budget in a, in a minimum of five to six years to fill up the budget, a minimum to do that correctly. So you, you were kind of looking at a timeframe. So I think somewhere between six and ten years to upgrade that road and to make that-
Well, and-
So on behalf of the citizens on Cottonwood Drive, they don't ever wanna see a tractor trailer going up and down that road, no matter how much improvement.
Hence, I think you ought to replace traffic calming measure with gate or something that means it's shut.
And maybe it ought to happen in control.
But I don't, I don't-
Control access or whatever.
Marriott, that was, Marriott Slaterville was not a cap to that, right?
I think it, it, it's also, okay, at some point, folks that live on Cottonwood just might want to go out that way.
No, no, it cuts both ways though.
Right.
No, be careful. I mean, I, I don't, I'm not sympathetic for that. Protect me, but let me do it. No, this isn't gonna be a one directional road.
But I mean, once the road can be improved to something better than what it is now.
Which will be art on us.
Which could be also, so this is another point I wanna get to, is there are, another thing that's in here is some financing mechanisms. There are things like public infrastructure districts that could be used. So the tax increment of this project could help pay for that improvement.
Of the road?
Yes.
That's what Marriott Slaterville's gonna do.
That's how they're gonna put in their lights. That's how they're gonna put in their calming in front of the tree.
Relative to this state, but I think we ought to not have this vague traffic calming, cause what does traffic calming mean?
Well then, why don't you say traffic, access control?
Why not just access control?
What calms the gate, calms the traffic on Cottonwood?
Well, the gate doesn't calm it, it stops it.
Yeah.
Yeah, you see, hit it.
It's a medic, mitigating.
Okay, if you like that term, I find it a little-
Construction begins, that gate goes in.
Yes.
The minute any development on this project breaks ground, the gate goes in. Maybe that's the trigger. We don't wait till it gets close, we wait till it starts. When I hear the word traffic calming, I'm thinking roundabouts and speed bumps.
Exactly. That's exactly what I thought.
Slowing traffic down, calming traffic down. Put a gate there.
Okay, a, a gate will work, but there will be a time when even we want a connection.
Well.
We can just have one conversation here.
Yeah.
Can we, can we, the sideline, can we kind of wrangle this all into one conversation?
Yeah, so what I was, what I was just saying, that is a trigger point to address y'all's concerns. You know, it doesn't sound like when we connect roads makes sense. So what I was saying is right now, there's dirt roads that go here, cause there's a home. So there's a big long driveway. If we were to install this road and connect it to the dirt road, it's really what it could be.
The trigger.
Potential issue. So that, that could be a trigger.
For the gate or for the-
Or whatever you dictate.
Whatever we dictate.
Reasonable traffic.
Yeah.
That doesn't ex- okay. So I guess it could be either one of these.
Yeah.
Once there's connectivity to Far West.
Connectivity between the two cities. What was the question?
The home.
Oh.
So the, their access would then just be here. So we would just have to, it's rented, so we just have to tell them that they would come down this way.
They'd probably go that way.
Where are we talking about putting gate?
At the, at the property.
The northwest corner.
Yes.
So, in reason of time, do we reword this or not?
Yes.
I'm gonna reword it so that the trigger will be when there's connectivity between the city boundaries essentially, when those roads are connected.
The essential of construction, because the dirt road, they could still try to come in through the back door, but-
Well, we can't walk up that home until there's roadway, so.
Yeah, so we'll wait until they-
So once there's a connection from the south, we cut off the connection at the north, until we can mitigate.
You're using something other than traffic calming, right?
Yeah.
Controlled access or whatever you-
Well, you can call it what you want, but even that begs the question of-
Traffic calming though opens up a Pandora's box of all kinds of stuff.
We get to dictate what that is, and we're gonna dictate what the gate looks like. And maybe there will be a, uh, you know, there is a possibility of using something like a roundabout that keeps trucks out and cars can go through. There, you know, there's, traffic people might know how to do these kinds of things better than, I know a gate will work, but I also, you know.
We, we just dropped, or Liam dropped an applause just to give you guys a quick.
Okay, fine.
Okay, I, is that the last?
I do, okay, go ahead.
That's good. I, I wanted to make sure we covered the red lines before we added more and then we gotta get ready for the next meeting.
Yep.
Okay, and-
Nine point five.
Yeah, this has to do with, since I can't see the, the previous page very well.
Amendments.
Okay, okay. The parties intend that the administration, not the approval of this agreement and any amendments resulting in non-material modification changes shall be processed through the administrative land use applications to be decided by the land use authority of those terms to be defined in UTA law.
Yeah, and I know last time we talked a little bit about what was gonna be a material change and whether the amendments should go through a process or whatever. Now we say for purposes of an amendment, a non-material modification includes those which are reasonably consistent with the intent of this agreement in the applicable zone or a routine and uncontested.
Legislative question for you. Because that would represent a change to a contract. That would make it, if it's a legislative action, should that, that be approved by the city council and not by the land use authority?
Not if the city council delegates it otherwise, through the legislative process, cause this is the legislative.
As a city council, is that something that we want to deli, changes of this agreement, are we comfortable delegating that to the land use authority?
Non-material modifications, amendments to the agreement.
About one specific thing here.
In-
Define non-material modifications.
Those which are reasonably consistent with the intent of the agreement in the applicable zone or a routine and uncontested.
Of this agreement and amendments resulting. Okay, so non-material modifications go through the land use authority.
Right.
But any-
Material modifications go through.
I think the protection was there in the language, it sounded good to me.
Okay, that is the end of the red lines. Did you have further potential red lines?
On, on, just going back to see the public infrastructure financing, as the infrastructure financing such as six, as I got thinking about this. And I know this language is only in here right now because it's something that Marriott Slaterville is exploring, doing. But doesn't the fact that the majority of the property is located within our city necessitate the fact that we will have to be a part of those, of tax agreements anyway? Because if they're just entering into an agreement for the section of property that is in Marriott Slaterville, that, the taxable value of that and the amount that would be available for infrastructure finance, financing is quite limited. that, the taxable value of that, and the amount that would be available for infrastructure finance financing is quite limited. And if the intent is just for them to do it, what good does that do them when it's just this little chunk of property? It seems like if, if we're if it doesn't make them, give them anything to go off of, and so doesn't that necess, doesn't that tie us then to also having to commit to infrastructure financing?
No, because we're not, we're not participating in it. But that interlocal will be for splitting the fees. And, which it talks about in that interlocal.
I understand, I understand that, but like, okay, just looking at the picture, there's a very small piece of the project that's in Marriott Sladeville.
Right.
And if the intent is to leverage sales or leverage property tax to pay for infrastructure, so you're just gonna do on that piece, and then it's just gonna be for the infrastructure that's in their city. And then that's also not very much property, like how, like, what's the impact of?
Does it have the benefit to Marriott Sladeville?
No, I'm just saying, like, there's, in order for them to have enough scale for an infrastructure financing, they're gonna have to use the parcels that are in Far West and the property that's in Far West.
Use that without us.
Right.
Right, but I, I don't, yeah, and that's.
The PID and the CRA would be completely separate processes that you guys would govern.
But I thought that was something that where.
Marriott Sladeville is banking on us being a reasonable partner in that communication, in that agreement, interlocal.
And don't you think then, shouldn't we have worked through an interlocal that, so we understand what that sharing is before we enter into this agreement?
Well, no, not if, because that all depends. I mean, that's back to the chicken and egg thing, right? Because if we do an interlocal and try to describe what, what costs we're going to have exactly without knowing exactly
what the development actually is gonna look like.
Consist of, then it puts us in the exact same situation. We could get in that interlocal and be like, well, we don't know if this costs are gonna work.
Us to come, I mean, you're gonna want us to be part of that, obviously, because a lot of the traffic is going that way.
Most of the traffic's going that way. Yeah, almost all of the traffic, yeah.
So, and, and mostly what we're discussing here is this interlocal agreement, which helps us with the zoning change. There is still a lot of process left with interlocal agreements, subdivisions, building permits and all of that. That's still future down the road. The, I think the interlocal is gonna be something we negotiate between cities, and that's, you know, I, I think we can get there. And we can use, you know, whatever we need to in order to get, fund what we need to for infrastructure.
But we're not bound to do anything we don't want to do with Marriott Sladeville, which is the key, I think.
We also wouldn't want to go into an, I'm gonna just throw this out there. If, we don't want to go into an interlocal agreement with Marriott Sladeville and then say, nor to this zoning. We could, but we don't, you know, that's chicken and egg.
Right.
Let's have something that we can actually have an, an interlocal agreement about.
We all agree on this.
Because none of this can really happen until we have an interlocal agreement.
But that, but, but that goes back to my point, like, how can we enter into this agreement when we don't know, there's like just still so many unknowns, like. Some unknowns.
I don't, I mean, that's why we're trying to protect it. You guys are doing a great job of trying to protect every little thing, and, and I think that's, that's good, but we don't know. Any of it's gonna be there, so.
But that's not our responsibility.
No, no. But that thing you develop, you're gonna.
But give me some, give me some, like, give me some densities.
Okay, I'm gonna ask this question. Right. Can I put this on our next meeting for a vote, or should we have another joint meeting? We, we'll want to review this one last time though, right?
Right.
I'll get changes out. Eventually, our next meeting is in January.
Our next meeting will be in January.
Are you guys planning to cancel January second?
No.
So you're gonna keep the second?
Whatever that first Thursday is, yeah. We have to.
Okay.
We can't, we can't cancel that one.
The nineteenth, because the second's so close to the holiday.
No, we don't do it because of the holiday. We're do, well, we are working for the nineteenth, because it's just the season. But after the first, no, we're back to business, man. Well, we have to do business item, we have to do business licenses, we're starting in New Year. And just because it's the second doesn't mean, you know, I'll be sober by then.
I'll get the draft with changes out, everybody within a week. You can see those, and then if it gets on for those January second.
Okay, and we can have a, if we need to, a quick joint work session before then.
Thank you. Turn the water in the fridge.
Yes.
Ken, do you need one?
Yes, please. Thank you. My table number three.
Yeah.
Do you like my graphic I found? I like pictures.
See ya.
I wasn't doing a very good job of explaining it, but I.
And I think that is in there for the interlocal agreements. I don't know whether it says subject to, but I know there's language in the development agreement referencing the interlocal agreements. Right.
It just says, uh, it's just related to infrastructure financing, though not the interlocal agreement.
Well, just put in there that Marriott Sladeville pays for everything, you can get all.
I like this. I found this picture, which will help in our conversation about tax increment. I'm absolutely sure people don't understand taxing.
That's where I wish I had.
I, I am jealous of Marriott Sladeville and their magic boards. Yeah, that they draw on.
So we can look at that, and I can turn that into numbers.
Right.
And that's super easy.
Is it?
It is.
That's what he does.
Think about it this way, so the base, this base property value.
That's what it is now.
That means, that really means property tax, right? Just to say it's ten dollars. All of the enders, our collective owners, continue to receive that for their share.
Forever.
Forever, for, for the life of the tax.
Okay, he loves them. And at the end of it, you get it all. She still hasn't looked like, okay, Doug.
Thank you.
Okay, yes, we will have our meeting about that. I wish I'd have been in leave.
Of course.
Really?
Well, fine. But it was like, I got in all the way to, we usually go into the produce, and then we go on the backside.
One minute.
And I was all the way, I'd be halfway in the store, so. Andrea.
Okay. Are we ready?
Yeah.
No.
Okay. I'm gonna call this regular city council meeting to order here at six thirty on Thursday, December fifth, twenty twenty four. Thank you all for coming. All of our mics are on, almost. And hello to everybody out there in YouTube land. So let's get, let's get started here. Boyd, will you pray for us? And Katie, will you lead us in the pledge?
Our Father in Heaven, we're indeed grateful this evening to be able to be gathered here in the city council chambers. We're grateful for this opportunity, Father in Heaven. We're grateful for this opportunity. We have to serve, to serve the citizens of Far West, and we're grateful for them. We're grateful, Father in Heaven, for those who serve us, those who protect our nation, those who protect our community, those first responders, and ask for their choices, blessings, to be with them, watch over and protect them. Let them know how much we appreciate them. We are grateful for the citizens of Far West, Father in Heaven, and we ask for good things to go on here within the city. There might be good things going on in homes, and that we might be kind and charitable, especially this time of year. We're mindful of those who are cold, and we pray for them, that they might be, find warmth. We pray this night as we go about this meeting, that we might be able to make good decisions. Good decisions that would help this community grow in a, in a good manner. We pray that we might be wise. We pray we might have the wisdom necessary to do so, and this is our prayer this night, in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Please rise and repeat after me. I.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Boyd. Thank you, Katie. Okay, on to, uh, comments, public comments. Here's a section where we have two minutes for public to do public comments. Anyone have any public comments? And moving on. Consent, I, we don't have a report from planning commission because they, they got last week off, so. Okay, first thing is assignments and direction for the planning commission. Do we have any new assignments or direction for the planning commission this late in the year? Yeah, we need a microphone for you to talk to, so it can be recorded and.
I'm just gonna add that we, next week, we're gonna be, uh, working, wrapping up the, uh, PD overlay and start, begin working on the external accessory dwelling units.
Hey.
That's where we're at right now.
Okay, thank you, Lyle. I'm, I'm gonna throw something in just for next year. Uh, I'd like the planning commission to, uh, seriously consider addressing the general plan once again for twenty twenty five. It's almost time again. It's only, you know, I know it's only been a couple of years, but it seems like things are happening quickly enough. Maybe we need to relook at things from time to time. Maybe not all the, the words and all that that we have in many other times, but possibly let's get, um, deep dive into some of these maps and, and decide what we want to do there. So it's a conversation to have, but, you know, it never hurts to keep looking at the general plan. Make sure that it's what we want to do. Okay. Next item, consider approval of minutes dated November twenty first, twenty twenty four.
Make a motion that we approve the minutes.
Second the motion.
Okay, Katie and Tim are motion second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Okay, passes unanimously. Consider approval of bills dated December fourth, twenty twenty four.
I move that we pay the bills.
Tim and Boyd are motion second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Passes unanimously. On to business items. Boy, we just might be cruising through this a little too quick here, huh? Business, no, I'm sure. Wait, okay, yes, we're gonna have plenty of time, because the next thing is consideration of employee reward and recognition program. Andrea, please make your presentation.
Okay, so you should all have this handout in front of you. Um, so as you requested from the last council meeting, I came out, or I came back with more variations on an incentive. Um, the green up top is what you guys talked about, what you were considering at the last council meeting, so that's why I just threw those in green. Um, where this does have all the employees on it, I would ask that maybe.
Just give them back to Andrea when we're done.
Either give them back, but I did want you to see how it all breaks out, because we're not trying to keep anything from you. Um, but I don't necessarily want it getting around to all the employees. Um.
You've been here twenty-three years, two months?
I have.
Continue, I'm sorry.
Uh, anyway, so as you can see at the bottom, if, I need to explain how those break. We talked about, Boyd brought up maybe doing a base incentive and then adding four milestone years. Um, so that's fifty dollar base plus fifty dollars for five years, and so then that's how that breaks out. Same with the hundred base, hundred for five. I just did a whole bunch of variations on it. I didn't know what you guys were looking at as far as that goes. I spoke to Cody this morning, and he talked about how Riverdale does it, um, on their annual basis. And it, it basically boils down to about one percent of the employees' wages. So I figured out based on our wage, is that annual one percent? Um, and then I figured it out year to date, um, because we do have some employees that haven't been here all year. Um, so theirs changed a little bit, um, and because we go fiscal year and we get our increases, our salary increases in July, the annual percent goes off of what we're currently making, but the year to date goes off of everything for the year, because the first six months we would be making less than what we're making the second six halves of, six months of the year. So, um, because I was take, like, kind of looking at it all today, where we do have some people that are really new, um, my suggestion would be to go with one of the top, um, what you were considering at the last meeting, and then if we wanted to do something yearly incentive wise, I would say, look at something like across the bottom. Um, I, because we don't do this, I would like to reward those people that have been here for a long time. And then maybe go to some, a different type of, uh, structure in the future years, if that was something that we wanted to budget for, for yearly, uh, yearly incentive.
Okay. Any questions for Andrea about this?
Thank you for your hard work on this. I think if we were going to do it, uh, with one of the top ones, I'd recommend probably the twenty-five and, and then, I mean, just looking at that, at least that gives somebody something, but and recognizing for that, but I, I would like to.
Referral season bump.
Yeah, refine this bottom part a little bit more, maybe for next year, so.
Oh, for sure. And that, that was, like I said, I didn't know what anyone had in mind, so I just threw out some combinations there. Um, it's.
The, this is what they'd get out of, out the door, not.
The top one, they would get, well, so the top and then the base plus fives, um, would be an out the door. The, the one percent, uh, as Riverdale does it, they take, they put it on their December paycheck, and so then the taxes come out of that amount.
I would make a comment that for those that have been here for just a few months, the twenty-five or the first green column may not be enough after taxes. It's not gonna be worth much.
They take home.
Top green one would be twenty-five out the door.
We'll give them extra.
While we do the tax.
Yep.
Instead of that we talked about.
Yeah, so then I do also want to let you know that the numbers, the totals at the bottom, those don't incre, or don't include that tax bump. Um, and I talked to Cody, and he said, because I wanted to be able to present to you what difference that would make in the overall impact financially, and he said that it would be less than ten percent of that total amount in addition to what I've got on the paper for you.
Where the total.
Yeah, okay.
So, yeah, so it takes that with another ten percent, and that would be like what we're looking at, probably max.
Twenty-five would be an extra two fifty. Two dollars and fifty cents on that twenty-five.
Yeah.
For instance.
Right.
Okay, so we have an action of consideration. Any more questions or comments?
I do want to comment.
Requests.
Where, we're looking at doing something in the policy for the future. That's not, like, you don't have to approve something off of the bottom this evening. I'm only looking at this year's incentive for approval today, um, and then if we wanted to make a policy change, we can discuss, you know, revamping this, the bottom numbers in the future.
Figure out the bottom and then budget for it.
Right.
Exactly, yeah.
Comments, questions?
When do we start our budget talks?
Huh?
When do we start our budget talks?
First next year, right, Cody? Budget season starts.
Okay, yeah, that's good, because I don't want to, I, I want this to be taken care of right first of the year and get it out. Okay, yeah, that's good. Cause I don't wanna, I, I want this to be taken care of right first of the year and get it out of the way so that you know and the rest of the employees know.
Okay. No more questions, comments, motions?
I'll make a motion that we approve the employee reward and recognition program at the twenty-five dollar a year level.
I'll second that.
Okay, Katie and Boyd are motion and second on this. I'm gonna roll call this because it's financial. Bob? David?
This is for this year only, correct?
Yes.
Aye.
Boyd?
Aye.
Katie?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Okay, unanimous. Thank you, Andrea.
Gives everybody something, thank you. So I mean, it's not enough, but it's. Thank you.
That's your forms now.
And they got dinner last week.
Yeah.
And chocolates. Okay, so that was A. Uh, the next one, this is gonna be a very, very tough decision, or the hardest decision of the night.
I will make a motion.
To cancel the December nineteenth, twenty twenty-four city council meeting.
Yes.
Second. Okay. Boyd and Tim were, those were the fastest, ones in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody, any nays? Anyone? Anyone? Okay, uh, report on assignments. Let's start with Tim.
Uh, I have nothing to report.
Katie? Just with the holiday, I don't have a lot either, but I did want to, I sent everyone um, an invite to the Utah League of Cities and Towns Budget Part Two Conversation.
That's the one you sent to me.
Mm-hmm. And I think even if you didn't see Part One, Part Two will still, you'll still get a lot of good information. So, um, it would, I'd love if everybody, you know, that was available, could attend that. And then, um, there is a public hearing for the budget for this next year for the mosquito abatement board. And it is scheduled on next Monday at six P M. at the district office. So if anyone feels so compelled to come and give comment on the mosquito abatement budget, please join. That's it.
That's it. Hey, Boyd?
Uh, don't really have anything at this point. Um, we have our fire district meeting next, next week. I, I just wanna, I have an overwhelming feeling of gratitude tonight, but um being able to serve on that board and, and watch that, that group grow. Uh, I'm the treasurer of that, of the, of the fire district. So I'm in there weekly, signing checks or doing different things with different meetings and um it's just been a, a pleasure to be in there and to be part of that. Um, it's, it's well run. Again, that, all of our public safety, the sheriff's office. Um, just, just grateful for all of them and what they do and how they do it. So share that. I'm done.
Okay, thank you. David?
A couple of things. Uh, I've met with Angie over in the senior center. Uh, they have some uh activities coming up here um, for the rest of the month. There is a Christmas party, December eighteenth at five thirty. Um, a breakfast for fifty-five and over on December twenty-third at ten o'clock. And uh a noon Year's Eve celebration.
That's my kind of New Year's.
Okay, uh, on December thirty-first. Uh, and rather than make everybody stay up until midnight, they're gonna count down to twelve noon. Put on their hats, blow their whistles, drink their, whatever they're gonna drink and celebrate New Year's in the middle of the day on New Year's Eve. Um, and so those. Yeah, will be somewhere. Uh, we had a youth city council meeting uh Tuesday night. We are now up to four members on our youth city council, uh which basically gives us enough room for a mayor and a quorum of three. Well, we're, we've got a good little thing going and we're gonna continue to build it. Uh, they have been uh informed of these senior activities and invited to come and lend a hand to give some service to the city with regard to those. We're also looking forward to the local officials day in January to take our youth city council uh down to Salt Lake and let them interact with the legislature and some of those activities coming up in January. They will let us know by next Tuesday. We have a short meeting scheduled uh whether they are able to get away from school uh with parental consent and let us take them down in January to that legislative day for the youth.
Did I answer your question on whether we would?
Yes. And I've also talked with Andrea about the budget for the youth city council. We know that we have the ways and means to get them down there. And so we've got some things now happening in relation to them. And that's probably the, oh, we do have a housing committee meeting next Monday at ten o'clock in the morning on Monday.
And you'll be there.
I will be until uh eleven thirty and then I'm leaving. Uh, okay, so we have a little bit of time on uh Monday morning to continue to look at uh some of the uh housing strategies for the year and to uh set up a way to track our progress with them.
Hey, that it?
Yeah, it's enough. Okay.
Bob?
I just have a couple of small things and then one big thing. The first one is the CISA Region Eight, which is um aligned with FEMA. Um, they had a teleconference this week and their theme was computer security. So listening to the, to the conference, the only thing I can really suggest to the city and to the people of the city is be very, very careful for scamming um at any age, any level, any computer. Because they are hot and heavy. Um, they gave a couple of examples that I won't give a lot of detail about, but people um in government organizations and at home level have been scammed and have lost a lot of money. So be very, very careful. Um, I attended a uh, meeting for the Central Weaver Sewer District and we were looking for things to do for the future, how to, how to be better and more efficient about our businesses. And I made a field trip this week out to North of Grumman to try and convince them that they need to take some bio solids and spread them across some of their property. Uh, the bio solids are what's left over after the remediation of your sewage. And after the snails have eaten it, it's been chemicalized and it's been rendered um non-toxic, non-hazardous, just a little bit pungent. Uh, if anybody has any need for fertilizer, they have more than they can give away. Or another piece is if you have any need for fill dirt, they have a couple of big, big piles of fill dirt from where they've been doing construction that they're gonna have to pay somebody to haul it away unless local people come and start shoveling it a bucket at a time. So if you have a need for either of them, they're free as of this date.
Over at the.
At the sewer district on Pioneer Road or for the other side of four hundred. And then the last item I have, which was the biggest and the, the most important is for Lou. Uh, Lou, would you just kinda come up here? Before we meet again, Lou, who has been heading up our CERT program for, for many, many years. Um, is submitting his letter of resignation. He needs to take a step back. Now, it's resigning from his directorship, but he's not resigning from CERT. He will stay a member. He'll help as best he can. Um, but there's no scraping paint anymore for you. You're done.
I don't have to. So it's a scraping with a paint then.
Yeah. We wanted to thank you for the thirty-plus years that you've been in the CERT program, not just in this city, but just thirty-plus years is a long time to be dedicated to something. And with your fervor and your, your impulsiveness and your, your heartfelt.
I got uh trained at the state level by the fire department from Los Angeles. And, and then the state took over and I've been with it ever since. And uh I, I.
Motion is okay right now. Go.
At my age.
Well, I thought we were gonna nominate you for the youth council.
Well, I think I've been, been around a long time, ninety some odd years. And I've uh had several careers. Marine Corps, Forest Service and CERT. And uh I just would like to back off a little bit, give the directorship to Jay, but help Jay out and and doing that. And there's some stuff I still wanna do for the city in, with CERT. And, and so I wanna stay active and, and keep that going. But I'll work under Jay and you, Bob.
We can still use your tutelage. So bring it, yep.
Lou, I wanna say thank you. There's the people that step up and volunteer to serve their city are few and far between and it, it's a pretty thankless job. The pay is crap. Cause there's not.
Yeah, I got a little little volunteer medal there somebody gave me.
But I think that there's a lot that others could learn from you and your service to not only your, your nation and thank you for that. And to your city and your community. So I thank you.
Well, I, I wanna thank the council for the new office that we have. And, and I want, it's, it's used to be, if you, any of you gentlemen wanna get a group together of twelve or fifteen people and have a little quiet time away from this office, we have the office over there. Gladly rent it out to you. No, I just, but thank you for that office. I, I worked hard trying to get something like that going and, and it did happen. And I hope you all get over there to walk through it, look and check that, check it out. There are new communications and everything.
We're not on a high note, right?
Yes, yeah, going on a high note.
Can I make you cry just a little? Or do you have anything more?
No, sir.
Okay, I'm gonna make you cry just a little bit. That's all right. Okay. Thank you, Lou.
Thank you.
Okay, I like stuff like that. That's, that's the good stuff. Are you done, Bob? Okay. Okay, now to bore everybody with my assignments, because I can't top that at all. So on my assignments, I did go to the housing, WACOG Housing Subcommittee. And I'm gonna pretty much summarize it because we've got another meeting coming up. Um, and I think we all know this, there's changes coming in the legislature. They talked more about those and uh they're getting in depth with them. There is some things that uh they did, when you guys went to the uh forum, there were some things that came out of that that they shared that were uh actually pretty cool. And I've talked with our city engineer, he was a part of, so Harrisville came up with this map that shows uh areas and projects within the city and what their infrastructure needs are. Like, here's a project, they're short on sewer. Uh, over here, they need roads, whatever that is. And he said that was not that hard to put together. So I'm, I've actually, I'm asking him to put that together for us as well. And they're gonna be asking for uh some more of that, as well as an inventory of our public lands. I think I mentioned this before. They want an inventory of our public lands because um there's at least an idea in, that's gonna come out in legislature that if there's any um residual public land that could be used to build housing on, they wanna know about it. So.
Something that's not already in our current general plan as, as to be used for something specific.
Right. So it's just residual stuff, because one of the reasons they wanna do that is because they believe, and not so much in Far West, because I don't think we have a ton, but in other areas where there's large swaths of um city-owned property, for instance, it's not slated to be a park or whatever. It's, it's in larger cities. It's like, that's one way they can build affordable housing, because one of the largest costs of housing is the land. So if they can get the land for free-ish, then the housing in theory should be more affordable. We'll see how that comes out in legislature, but you know. Um, at Bonavista, uh, we too have, we passed a tentative budget and we too have a public hearing for Monday, but it's at six thirty, because we're aware of other public hearings. So if you want to uh voice your opinions or anything about the Bonavista budget, six thirty. So after attending the mosquito abatement, you can come to the six thirty Bonavista uh public hearing and hear all about that, unless there's other public hearings that we're aware of. I hear the sewer board might be having one coming up too. So they were trying to avoid that. I wanna thank everybody who, of course, came to the uh Christmas party. That was pretty awesome. And then we had Thanksgiving in between. We had Christmas and then Thanksgiving. That's kind of a reversal of what we've done before. Uh, yesterday, um, I had a meeting with Mary Sladerville about the Black Pine Development. We've kinda talked in in depth on that. And if anyone wants to hear some more details, I'm happy to share. And just something that yesterday, just so something that we're aware of, I met with a, a hotel guy, a guy who wants to build a hotel possibly somewhere in Far West. Something he said to me kinda struck me. He goes, you know, I've been driving around this area for a long time. I go up to, you know, Logan, I go to, and I go, come through here all the time. And he goes, Far West looks like an industrial park. Why do I need to build a hotel here? So I was telling him why maybe he'd want to, because maybe people wanna stop. And we told him some of our history, but that was just something I heard that was interesting of a perspective from somebody not from the area that, you know, when they drive through Far West, they think it's an industrial park.
Yeah, it's not, I doubt, I doubt he got off the freeway going through Far West. Or he didn't, he wouldn't have said.
No, and when he did, he's like, you actually have quite a beautiful city here. But, you know.
The wall hides us.
Yes, the good parts. We don't have enough wall on the bad parts. And then uh, it's not really an assignment, but I do wanna bring, it's kind of an assignment, because um Cody, you happen to be here, so I'm glad you are. I would actually love to start seeing uh budget reports starting in January for each quarter. If you don't mind doing that for us. That's to keep us on top of where we are with the budget, because sometimes when we get into budget season, we're like, what? So maybe if we're up on it a little more frequently, that would be awesome. So.
That was the recommendation that came out of that first webinar that I did, that city council should be getting quarterly budget updates.
And I didn't even watch that yet. That's cool. I guess I got it through osmosis. And that's all I have for uh my assignments. We have one more uh item on the agenda before we go into our next meeting. Tim and Boyd are motion second for adjournment. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Adjourned. Thank you all. Okay, and we've got uh a couple of minutes before our next meeting. And uh, yeah, so. Okay, yeah, I, I really should have said, I, I was gonna send that one. Um, first of next year, let's go through, or maybe even before that, I'll send out a thing and let's kind of pre-discuss what our assignments are.
Is there a way you can give me something that the kids can look at, choose the shirt themselves? Well, I don't know. If you have that huge carry on apparel. I don't know what they want. We want to put on kind of a school and country consensus on what they'd like to do.
Like the notes?
Something like ours. It says Far West City, Far West Youth City Council on it.